This conference will now be recorded.
Happy to open this village board meeting for July 20th and ask you all to start with the collegial allegiance.
Collegial allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's one nation under God, in the resolve of the religion and justice of all.
Thank you. You're welcome. Welcome, everybody. Let's try it again.
So hard to say. Yes.
Well, it's interesting. Okay, we've got three sets of village board meetings in the packet. The first set being Monday, June 1st. Second set being Monday, June 15th. And then again, Monday, June 29th. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June 1st. Second? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Make a motion to accept the minutes from June 15th.
Second?
Second? Peter, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Passed.
I'll make a motion to accept the public hearing minutes from June 29th.
Second?
All in favor? Any objections? If not, passed. Okay, item D is deleted for tonight. We'll move on to notice of resignation. One of our electric department members, Mr. Joseph Wilmot, resigned his position as lineman during back to July 3rd, 2020. So this is just pretty much for the record. Would ask for a motion accepting his resignation as presented. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. We've got a couple of recommendations coming from Kimball Davies, superintendent of the electric department. The first one is...
Justin.
Okay, Justin. I've got him reversed.
No, that's Ryan.
Ryan Taylor.
Hi, Taylor.
As of June 29, 2020, Ryan Taylor will need, I guess this must have been set up ahead of time, all the requirements to be advanced, second class lineman, step four. He's required to have a Class B CDL license, actually has a Class A, so he's ahead on that. As of June 29, he has met the 30-month requirement for his day of fire as third-class lineman. And he's recommending he be promoted to second-class lineman, step four, with a corresponding pay rate of $34.48. That's going to be effective for about 11 days. His contract's expiring. He's currently at $32.74, and actually, he's been on the job for two and a half years. So I would ask for a motion.
Take a nice higher.
Peter, any further discussion on that one? Not all in favor?
I agree.
Okay, it's unanimous. Next recommendation likewise from Kimball, as superintendent of the department. With the departure of Chief Lineman Joe Wilmot, Edgar Blarg and Sparky, as we all know him, has assumed much of the daily supervision of the line crew. Sparky has assumed these duties during periods that Joe has been absent in the past. Sparky's an excellent journeyman lineman, has extensive experience with storm restoration gain well, performing mutual aid duties to other utility companies, and is considered a valuable member of the electric department. There is no one more deserving of this promotion than Edgar. So effective July 21st, he's recommending Sparky Edgar be promoted to chief lineman at a pay rate of $40.97 per hour. Sparky's actually been with the department 28 years. He came here in May of 1992, and his current rate of pay is $38.82, so he's picking up about a little over $2 an hour pay raise. But he's taking on a lot more responsibility than he's actually been doing in recent days. So I fully support that recommendation.
First and a second.
First and second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, congratulate Sparky. Next item we have is from Village Clerk. I'll let Anita describe it.
Well, it just designated this location as the polling place for the rescheduled special election for September 15, 2020. We did this already when we were designating this the spot back in April or March, plus March, and now we just have to designate it again for September.
We ask for a motion supporting the resolution number, the number isn't noted, resolution regarding the designation poll in place in hours for the rescheduled village special election to be held at 15 days in September. Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, go on that, Anita. Look at that, halfway through the list. Now, we have a junior application from the fire department and three new member applications to consider. I don't know if you want to take one of them individually. I have no problems with all of them. They all look good. If we're in accord with that, I'd ask for a motion accepting and approving all applications that are submitted. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Actually, these four individuals. Crown Plaza, Anita, I think the only thing I have from these is they don't have all the dates.
Right, so the only one we're approving tonight is the August 29th one.
Okay. So can I have a motion approving and authorizing the event scheduled for Saturday, August 29, 2020, for the Lake Placid Golf House, Lake Placid Club Golf House? Is that less than 50 people?
Honestly, I did not ask, but she also said to me that she thinks there's a good chance it's going to be canceled. But it's still on the books at the moment, so, but I can see why. Yeah, and at the moment, that is the rule, so we can say it's approved pending, but it's only a max out of 50 people.
Is that up to us to make sure that there's 50?
No.
It's just more of a...
Yes, it's up for the hotel.
Okay. I can't say anything. We'll just hope that...
It's a reasonable question.
But she actually doesn't even think it's going to happen, it's just on the books, so she needed that approval.
We could be a little bit more aggressive here and just simply in our motion indicate, providing it meets whatever the current COVID standards are.
I think I'm...
Agree with that?
Yes.
Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? I guess not. Lake Placid Classic, this request is from Rick Preston, who's the race director for the annual Lake Placid Classic half marathon and 10K event, currently scheduled for Saturday, October 10. It's being canceled, and in its place, they're requesting approval for rescheduling this for Saturday, October 9, 2021. No other changes in the request or in the race course, and I guess we have to say something to the effect of conditions allowing.
I think it's yeah, it's canceled.
Frank, is that Columbus Day weekend?
Yes.
It's a very, very busy weekend.
2021, not 2020. That's why it's having it.
Right, but is it for 2021, is it Columbus Day weekend? That's one of the busiest weekends of the year.
Yep, yes. But generally, it's a fundraiser for CYC, connecting youth communities. It doesn't bring additional people in, it just gives people who are already here an event.
I'm just thinking of safety, and I know that how busy that weekend can be. It's my only comment.
They, I believe this is the one that they run early in the morning, and it's out of the village by 8:30. That's the last we see of them.
Which is the only one.
If that helps, Janet. They finish at the horseover hours, they don't come back into the village.
Do we, should we amend the motion to ensure that they adhere to whatever COVID standards the governor recommended at that time? You're in the whole...
Any further thoughts on that? If not, we have a motion? And a second? And we'll call a motion, and all in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay. We can advise Rick accordingly. Next request we have is from Greg Porcellari on behalf of the Lake Placid Marathon, which is not happening this year. He is looking for dates for June 13, '21, and June 12, 2022, and just wants to know if those dates are okay. So I guess, at the moment, they are, assuming they're allowed to have events. So do we have a motion in support of this request? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we can take care of that. And then finally, again, from Greg, regarding Ironman, just looking to, and I'm a little bit puzzled here, I thought the September 12, '21 Ironman, that Ironman was canceled.
He sent this before that was canceled, that's why.
So that's why I put a question mark on that. So in that case, then we would only authorize the full Ironman?
Correct.
And I suspect that that's going to be the last year of the current contract that the community has with Ironman, which is not significant for this. Just as a heads up, it'll be coming up probably for negotiations, Janet would know that. And she did not regret.
We'll have to look at that.
Yeah. But anyway, the July 25 date, I think we can act on, but again, just as we have all the others, assuming that there's a, an environment where they can host the event. Is there a motion? Second from our motion, Peter. Any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Jeez, I told my wife this will be at least a three-hour meeting.
We'll keep you out.
Okay. At the work session I presented for you, and we discussed it and agreed that it's a good resolution regarding racism, hatred, intolerance in our community, therefore, I have advised, just put it on the record to get it into the public record and ratify it tonight, the energetic park local government review board statement, which I think covered everything that we felt we should be covering as a community. So we just ask for a motion ratifying that action. So, Peter. All in favor? Any opposed? And in connection with that, I'm still working, to some degree, I'm working with the chief on putting together the, I'll talk about it a little bit later, I think, hundred and eighty items, the community growth. And let's see, I think the last item under the clerk items is the consulting agreement we have with Ivan Segraw. Actually, it's expired on January 1st. Second? And because we're submitting the project that this is tied to, is out for public, this came up for review, the renewal proposal that you got in front of you is a mirror image of the one that we signed with in 2017. Rates are the same, there are actually no changes whatsoever. Simply extends this so that it goes through the period of time that Ivan would be engaged through the main street project. So therefore, on that basis, Janet, do you have any further thoughts on the Ivan Segraw retainer?
Oh, I think it's not exclusive, and as you know, we've used other engineers on, for example, the water project. He's deeply involved right now, as is shown in the addendum to this contract in some of our projects, so probably be difficult to switch, at least with regard to refer to those, change those contracts in the middle of the stream.
That's true, and most of them are related. So I have no reasons not to recommend this, so I do recommend that this consulting agreement be extended to January 1, 2023, which should get us through all of these projects. Any further questions on that? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay. Anything else that comes up, Anita, from your area?
No, I think nothing more additional.
Case of the treasure items, and I think many of you might have one additional item that...
I just supplied everybody with our current things, reconciliations for the end of June, so everybody can see where we were at, financial-wise.
And also the collateral association report concerning the time period, all of which appear to be satisfactory. I would, I would ask for a motion accepting and approving the treasures reconciliation and collateralization reports. Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Next item we have, anything else, anything coming from you? You'd like to comment on?
Just that our new software program is up, and we're running on it, and it's awesome. We are still getting used to a few of the additional items, but the capability is phenomenal, and it's way easier to use. Tracy is running through the payroll and accounts payable on it, and we haven't had any issues thus far.
Payroll?
Yeah, in case anybody has any issues with pay stuff, there's like four different versions of the pay stuff, so we're trying to figure out which one's the best. But it's a learning curve, but definitely leaps and bounds better than what we had.
Great.
What was it, what was it costing?
It was $12,000 per department, so, yeah. But that's for utility billing, and we had, we got project accounting as well, and the fixed asset module, which apparently we had before, and nobody used it. We had the project accounting too, and nobody used that one. But we can assign projects to everything, so tracking likes for every project that we have, income coming in, expenditures going out, will all be a lot easier to track.
If I remember right, too, once you log in the grant fundings that are receivable, it will track how much you've used and what's left, which up until now, I think we had to do manually.
Yeah. And the encumbrance part of the accounting software, so that when we budget for something in one year and don't spend it, it doesn't go directly to fund balance, it will actually carry over to the next budget, so we're not budgeting for it twice, which I think is going to be huge, because we've had that happen with different road projects in the past, so...
Just about every year?
Yeah. So the numbers next year are going to look a lot different, but they're going to be a lot more streamlined, and we can actually track, Greg and I were talking today, fixed assets, like how long the water plant, how long the tanks are supposed to last, we can put in the actual data and use those depreciation tables to see, okay, when do we need to start funding another tank, or when do we need to start funding an upgrade to the building, because we know this is how long it's supposed to last, instead of having to go back 500 times, and, oh, do we need this this year, or do we need this next year, it'll automatically populate, say, hey, you're getting close to your next.
We actually did an obsolescent study probably twelve years ago, it was committed, and it came in, I think, the first year I was in office, and it basically looked at the wastewater plant, which was practically new plant at that point in time, and it put obsolescent factors in place for every element of the plant, and I think it created recommendations just to setting up reserves, so that if something went down, you had the reserves in place to replace it. Desirable accounting technique, and it's another way of not having to go out and debt yourself to repairs or...
It's all on paper, it's all electronic. You're asking for measure.
It's a paper report that's probably done on the wastewater plant at this point, or maybe we've got one of the files up here. But that's the kind of stuff that future years budgeting, it'd be really, it's something Paul was starting to do a little bit, didn't Paul throw on it completely, but it's not wasted if we use it, it's only wasted if we never look at it.
And then there, once we get everything tied out and make sure everything equals and it's moving quite as opposed to, we'll get everybody logged in, so you won't have access, and set up whatever reports you want to look at on a regular basis, so you're not waiting on me or Tracy or anybody to run it, there'll be canned reports that you can click on and then pull up here, current, and if you want to know where we are budget-wise, and you can't get ahold of me, all you have to do is click on the budget report and all the budgets, right, where we are expenditure-wise, revenue-wise, anything and everything, we'll be able to send POs electronically as well, so if you can't make it in the office, you can sign off on it via the internet.
Nice. What's the service agreement over there?
Don't know all the stuff, it's no more than we were paying it for, because we went cloud-based before.
It's a big server, we're still going to need that in the future.
I'm in conversations with Scott right now about that, because that backs up all of our individual PCs. We just upgraded that server when we went to the second version of Incode 9, because we needed more capacity, but when Robert was here, that server gets backed up to a backup, to a backup, to a backup, to a backup, all on the same server, so we actually have no room on that server. They keep dumping files, because there's so many backups on it, and because most everything we do now is on the cloud for our accounting software, they're going to come in and scrub it, and we're going to set up specific user files that need to get backed up on a regular basis, and not worry about the other ones, because random Word file may not need to be, but our shared files on the server need to get backed up on a regular basis, because like, my, my server file is accessible by myself, Megan, and Tracy, because we all work on similar projects together, so that stuff has to get backed up. It only has to get backed up off one computer, not all three. So I had a call with God last week, and we're in the process of trying to revamp it, so he can save us some money.
What happens with the hundreds and hundreds of emails that are falling in here every day in the west, those are getting stored?
Those get backed up to the cloud on Microsoft 365.
What if they cloud crashes or word...
Yeah, then we're all at lunch. We have physical backups for our emails as well on the server.
Do you still take hard copies from the disk? You ever do that anymore?
No. They get backed up onto the server, and then everything goes to the cloud.
I think we've all noticed since the COVID-19 virus hit, that the volume of email traffic is tremendously increased.
Oh, yeah, somebody's coming to see you, they're all sending you an email instead.
Good work, thank you. Following on that, we have the affidavit number 23, which is that file that's sitting in front of the clerk, represents bills totaling $629,359.95. Two-thirds of that is the electric department, and it's principally the monthly electric payment, plus national permits payment, those are normal items. I think you've all received them electronically if you want, I'll be happy to forward more detail, but if not, I would ask for a motion.
One note on NIPA, they are coming out with a user app, as well as a on-screen app. I did a demo for them, they asked a couple of different municipalities, but you always ask where we were last year to this year, and actually, when you pull it up, the grid pops up to see where you used it was from the prior year to a current year. And they do a to-date...
Real plan?
Yes. So, and they'll tell us exactly where we are.
Kill what?
Kill what? But where we are as far as our true-up. It automatically balances it every time they make a payment. It's a really cool website, and it looks just like the bill, but you can click on everything, and it will populate different rates and...
That's a huge step forward, because now when we get the billing statement, we get to compare it, but it's never the same month a year ago.
They don't do true-ups until...
No. And it explains the NIPA charges as well, which is kind of cool, because nobody at NIPA can explain NIPA charges. But just a little side note, it was pretty cool, yeah.
Great study, any idea?
So...
We've got two or three municipalities that have a higher priority than, though I don't know how they establish the priority, apparently the need is greater, and that's what sets the priority.
But as of right now, they're not moving on anything until at least September, when they give back the offices, everybody's still working remotely. So I did shoot an email to Keith Hayes, who's John's boss, who I know him anyway, to see if we could have some further discussion on rates, because they're not high enough. What he's sent back for preliminaries will not equate to what we're going to lose in the PPAC, so don't want to lose money.
No. Let's see, did we vote on the bill payment?
Yeah, we have a...
All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Those can be paid. If there's anything else under items, section three, we'll move to old business, and these are just mostly updates. Main Street reconstruction project, which includes the water main, the stormwater system, rebuild of the sidewalks, and obviously, refinishing of Main Street when that's all completed. That was released today and advertised for bids. I don't think, Anita, we have the detail yet, minus to what the bid opening date was going to be.
There is, I want to say it's August 28th, it's the last Thursday in office, I remember that.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. I wrote it down.
11:00 AM on that date.
Before that, it was a meeting, probably not...
Yeah, I wanted to, that's August 5th.
August 28th is a Tuesday. Oh, wait a minute, August 28th is the last Friday in August.
It's the last Friday.
Oh, so, I think you're right, then it's the 26th, because it wasn't 30.
So what will happen is they'll be open, the bid opening would be on the 28th, and then this board will have the opportunity, they'll be reviewed by Ivan in engineering and Kathy Swasso, I guess, on the water part, and then at that point, we'll have to make the ultimate decision.
When's the next meeting after the 27th? Is that Monday?
It'll be the first Monday.
Is that Labor Day?
It doesn't like it off for reviewing.
Oh, and the 7th, the 7th is also Labor Day, so that it'll be the 8th.
Right, that should be all right, but...
Okay. Big step forward for this community. Big step forward for this community. So that's, well, honestly, we've learned to get this project done as others come. Peter, did you want to comment anymore on other aspects from the effort here? There's parking garage.
Well, as you know, we're going to meet with the town heels tomorrow. It's in the right. Hopefully we can make a deal just trading land for access. I don't know if that's what they think. I have no idea.
Originally, that's what they were thinking is access was equal to some land that they would give to us.
The other two, let's hope they're going to have. Like I said to you Craig earlier, they care to how many, they don't know what they want as far as regoing the twenty-five foot, so at least a hundred fifty feet long for temporary easement. So they were talking about putting one inside for fun so they can, as part of the good package, so they can replace it themselves and greenery trees, grass, where they could decide to keep. I don't think that should be a holdup for ten grand or whatever to this project because it's a huge asset for the village to get additional ten feet on the one side. Because it cannot be done. You need a hundred, you need a hundred twenty feet for one, two, three, four lanes across. You need a hundred and fifty.
We've learned a lot in this project.
And unless we want to go through what they're doing here at the school, enormously expensive, they want to give us.
Now we put a concrete wall, that's ours.
Yeah, twenty-five foot temporary easement. So we're going to dig back twenty-five feet and forty-five degree angle basically of slope. So the men need to work safely, safely building, retaining all that stuff. If that deal happens, it's huge, it's those tough things.
I think, I think your group has come up with probably the most cost-effective way to meet some of the community's desire for more parking and do it in a way that will, will not be offensive to the eye. Keep them green.
Hope it all happens.
Okay, land use code update. Bart, you want to?
Sure. I continue to meet every Tuesday at eight-thirty. We started out with a three-page list from Mike Orlicelli and pretty much gotten through that now. We're going through Bill Billerman's list and we're going through Dan Keller's list. Basically, what we're coming down to is there's three categories. So it's what we call edits. They're obvious. They're just words here and there. It'll be something to clean up so that makes their life easier. Then there's what we're calling substantial items. And that's going to be something for a public hearing. And then there's the ones that we need the experts for. And that might be, for instance, like what do you do about solar panels and things that are coming that we really don't have any good knowledge of? And that's where we're headed, but we're, we're still plugging along.
So meeting every week?
Every week. Do your homework, keep moving. Thank you.
Item C, short-term rental update. I just wanted to remind everybody that the host compliance software is live and that folks that are in the short-term vacation rental activity have until the thirty-first of July to submit an application. It's an online submission. I looked at it. It's fairly straightforward. As of August first, enforcement of the short-term rental legislation will obviously commence. I don't know that that necessarily would, is the cut-off point for applications at this point. I think we'll probably have to look at that when the time comes.
All I know is I've directly communicated with some people who I know are kind of slippers, who rent and know, oh, yeah, I have to fill that out. Oh, I didn't know. I heard about it and I got some, well, you get it in, but what's...
Well, you can't rent without it.
Yeah, because there's a lot of people over there saying, I didn't know.
That's right. I think that's going to happen. But I know I took a call from a property owner that's got not all contiguous, but they've got four properties and they're like, we don't want to fill this out four times. And so you've got four properties, which we're not even going to rent. And actually, two of them, as we went through it all, are actually long-term duplex, long-term rentals. So we don't have to include that in the tool that you're using. Weekend renters. I said, anything over thirty days is not included in this.
How many do I have signed up for now?
I don't know.
Twenty-four is the number I heard that that was.
Hundred twenty-four. They had sixty, I've converted to host compliance, so let me save about a couple.
That's how it lasts Tuesday.
That's about the four.
It's been the last minutes. It's kind of, yes, the way to set it up, you have to go back and go back.
I know.
You're missing something. You have to start forgetting again.
Oh.
I actually, I'm only saying, you've really got to have everything in the status. You need to have everything right on the table when you start.
Yeah, you go through it and then you get stuck and you can't keep going.
That's right.
You have to go back. Then you find out the property number from the office. Fill that out, then you have to keep going, then you have to get stuck again. It's not very well.
So we'll be looking, we'll certainly have a better report, I think, the next board meeting.
There's certain things like septic inspections, chimney inspections. It's going to be a hundred fifty chimney inspection recorder. None of the people to do that. So we're going to have to do something like your application, but you have fifty days or whatever to.
Yeah, contingent.
There's no way, there's not enough inspectors to do them all. Invite us to get the org users in.
No, just remind you that it's the enforcement that is starting on August first. People can, people can apply and should be applying all the time to get on there. It's, it's the enforcement that was, is going to commence on August first.
But you must have the chimney inspection before you can send in your application. That's how it needs.
I know, and I know that's a problem for a lot of these properties, as is the septic inspection. If it's required. There just aren't enough septic people or chimney people around to do it. But I know that's very backed up and people are having a hard time getting those inspections scheduled.
So there's going to have to be approved applications pending those things being done, something like that.
Maybe what I can do is ask Michael or Garcia to come to our next work session and have us have some conversation. How will that be? Local government communication plan for White Classic in town in North Hill. That's just an update. Bart, you're working with a committee with Kate Thompson and Department of Public Commission. I know, I know we had a meeting, seems like ages ago, but I guess it was last week, with Kate and she went over a lot of the detail. She's very deep. I will say she's very detail focused. Kate Thompson, great Thompson. She's spearheading the Development Commissions Committee that's looking at governmental organization and communications.
She has a five-page report. She's met with the town and Craig and myself. It's time to give her a chance to see where she goes next.
I think she has a fairly significant background in that area. You know, but also I would say it's one of the larger corporations in the country. We'll see. There's nothing else under old business that we have interest in at the moment. I'll move on to mayor items. I mentioned earlier, we ratified the local government review for the statement against racism. And I have, it's in your packet, I believe, you have the government, the governor's order number two oh three, which actually is the detail of what we as a community with an active police agency operating are expected to do. Words are pretty straightforward. Each local government with a police agency operating with officers must perform, words must, a comprehensive review of various aspects of police department operations, policies, procedures, practices, and develop a plan to improve such deployments. I suppose in the event that it's deemed that we need to improve on. The department itself is looking at these right now. Each chief executive shall convene the head of a local police agency, stakeholders in the community, to develop a plan which shall consider evidence-based policing strategies, including but not limited to use of force policies, procedural justice, and other issues involving law. And the political subdivision, which is the village in coordination with its police agency, must consult with stakeholders. And I'm taking that to mean that those stakeholders can be the same ones that we're convening to begin with. So that is a focus. I have a partial list of names and we'll try to round that out and get it to the board for further review. But we have until April first to submit that. And it also has to be offered for public comment to all citizens in the locality. I think that would come after the stakeholder group is done its work. So we're working, we'll get that underway. I noticed the good mayor of the city of Plattsburgh, he's already got his committee appointed, put twelve people from the city on it and anticipates they're going to have their work done by January first, which is probably when the new mayor will take over in Plattsburgh.
Did I hear correctly though, there's no police officers or law enforcement personnel on that committee?
You may have. That's not what the governor's directed clearly to say this. But you may have. It seems to, I don't know how you can review an agency if you don't have somebody from within the agency. But, but that's going to be our approach to that.
You're going to ask the chart to be on it? Who, who, you got a billiard chart to be on your?
It should be a village board member. It can be, certainly can be one of the commissioners. I don't have any strong, that's up to the board, what we as a board want.
I mean, it affects PD, shouldn't be somebody from the PD.
Chief and probably one of the... For sure.
Yeah, sure.
Second item I have was just a commentary. We did remove the three parking spaces out back here and I've had nothing but good, good statements following that. I love by the name of Eric Thornbush that had spoken to me verbally about it. And I said, this is before we've taken the action. I said, write me a nice letter and ask us to consider that. It would be helpful. And he did. And half the letter had to do with those three spaces. But he also said, I'm also not opposed to converting the stretch of parkside to a one-way street. I think that is something that our commissioners should be looking at with the department.
Again?
Yeah, and then he discovered, he said, the second road safety issue that I see is a lack of road paint on Central Road near Central Road Station Street. The next day the state put the paint on. So let's take that. I also received a call, same type of question from Barbara Benwire, David's sister. And she said, I heard rumors that you, that you, the parkside is one-way. I said, well, that's a rumor. Hasn't been acted on. But I said, it's just, well, the hotel is open. Maybe you're going to have to do something. And I said, well, it would really be helpful if we had, if we knew that the neighborhood was supportive of any change. So I said, if you're that interested, I'd love to have a note from you to that effect, which we can put in the file. And I think this time around, we really want people to be supportive. But anyway, Anita, this information probably should be kept in a folder. We'll only want to come in.
If we can get Jamie Watson as the board.
Yeah. Good luck with that.
And you just really have to drive it into his head that you can still bring a fire truck if it's necessary. I know that's his big concern. So you can't bring a fire truck down if it's one-way, but you can.
Police can do anything they need to do.
You need to close the street. You can, you can bring a fire truck down. However, you can bring a fire truck down.
Other than that, Main Street compliance, every day we're getting, you know, they have this number set up that you can send a complaint to. And in the preponderance of complaints, we're still getting, only one today, that the state sent back to the sheriff's department and it got back to the town and village and said, no one in White Classic is wearing a mask. In fact, over the weekend, I had, we did, we placed four or five additional signs on Main Street that indicate that a mask is required in that district. We put one at the upper end of Main Street, Sernick Avenue, with one in front of the community church sort of, one of the, and each parking lots are marked. And frankly, both bill, and I thought in our surveillance of that, that over the weekend, we got very high cooperation. So my, my.
Compared to Craig, sorry. As compared to two weeks ago.
Yeah, it's much better.
It's twenty-five, thirty percent more.
And I have to say that I think the word require the mask makes a difference.
I noticed, I've driven down Main Street several times a day, every day, and I've noticed a significant object of people wearing masks. And I think it definitely correlates with sort of the push for the police getting all and handing out the, and the science of the issue.
We're getting the same complaints on the backside of Merril Lake where people are walking. And I don't feel there it's completely possible to social distance. I mean, you can, you can step aside when people, some people step off the walk. I see that routinely. So social distancing up there is possible where Main Street definitely is not. So we are getting, we are getting those. The other one that we were seeing was, of course, with the governor's orders Friday on stand-up bar service.
Yeah, well, you know, now they're giving them chips. I don't know if that's going to qualify.
Somebody got dinged for that already.
Already?
I'm not hundred percent sure, but I think these guys got dinged for it.
Oh, that's why they wrote, and I'm happy.
Yeah, I think they're selling. Well, yeah.
We required somebody to just have chips, not chips.
And you have to, and you have to sit down.
You have to sit down. And they can do the same.
I know we were.
But zigzags, what they do.
Yeah.
Well, they can, they can, they can sell a package of peanuts and you basically comply. If you look at the stuff that I wrote on the Friday.
Let's hope so. Otherwise a lot of people are very in trouble.
Yeah. I know we were going for dinner one night and sat down and ladies wanted drinks first and we're in no rush to order and the waitress said, they can't serve you the drinks. So they ordered some nachos.
Yeah.
It's legal.
It'll increase the restaurant sales.
If, if somebody called the village offices and asked, I have a complaint about not wearing masks for XYZ company. Who do I make that complaint to?
We give them a number and let them, because the state's tracking me.
Albany.
Not every complaint is handled by our local PD or code officer. Some of them are Department of Health, some are ABC Board, there are other agencies. And it's outside the village. I'm not going to speak for the state because I don't know what they do. Maybe the sheriff does it. But they got their hands full.
I'd just like to know if the guys from the water department filled those signs. They did a really nice job.
Nice looking signs.
It is a great job.
Really good looking. And again, that's a collaborative effort between the village and groups. Okay, anything else that come up tonight? I pretty well exhausted that. Got a copy of the dog control officer inspection report. Again, the village indicates the amount of activity. I think, I think that the five dogs that were apprehended and placed for the animal shelter. And again, that relationship continues to work really well. Other than that, we just happened to get a notice of a public hearing on something coming up in front of the planning board. I just stuck it in the folder because it's information for you. Cunningham's are going to refinish their building.
They're going to.
I thought you.
Should tear down the house in the back at the same time.
Have to check this. Commissioner, please. Anything else?
Peter, you talked to Brad lately about. Peter, have you talked to Brad lately about getting a sample of permacotton bricks just in case Main Street doesn't become granite, it becomes bricks?
You mean putting it in here?
I'll circle back on that. Just what we mentioned before, the fire department had a good volunteer plan, they had a good fundraiser for the 14th. And it's August 8th barbecue, which will replace the pin ceremony, different things. For the fire department, they didn't have there, thankfully. Everything's going well, police department, other than that?
I think other than that, on the firehouse, the fireboat, one of the, the fireboat on the way with the jets, one of the turbines, they were waiting on a part that's coming from Washington to. It, it doesn't affect the pumping, but it affects the speed of the boat and getting from the boathouse to the scene. So they, what's been recommended, I saw it from Justin the other day, is that we purchase a new turbine for it and then sometime in the coming year, they'll probably have the existing turbine rebuilt. It's out of a company in Washington State. Other than that, the boat is operational. It's just, it doesn't, it doesn't have the same thrust as far as moving the boat. So I also, I had talked with Bill when he brought up that because the late people raise questions once in a while, John Neiderdinger in particular. And I think he has a little more knowledge of fire departments maybe than some. But anyway, I suggested to Bill that maybe, maybe we ought to have the fireboat looked at by somebody that's qualified to do it and to evaluate both the boat and the equipment. And if in fact there is any reason following that to look for maybe replacement equipment, that, that we begin to undertake a plan for that, which might include some kind of fundraising on the way.
I mean, now's the time, man, two fires.
Yeah.
Now's the time, you got a lot more than most people.
So we'll, we'll have further discussions on that.
Yeah, I think they did bother.
I like your, I like your lineup. Thanks to keep that going. He owns appropriate. No, I completely, I completely agree. You know, one of, one of, one of the reasons we're thinking inside that is in fact, some of these camps up there are multi-million dollar properties. So if we really got a good fire going, whoa. How many fireboats we have?
He has for sale.
Yeah.
Joe Brewster.
Yeah.
A million dollars. That's it?
Anything else? Electric substation project is looking, it's just finished. I think we're waiting for.
Yeah.
Witness has to, they cut it over. The contract, our contract work is pretty much done.
I drove by that again today and every time I drive by, it just looks bigger and bigger and bigger. Those things that come, I don't know what they are, those.
Relocated.
Yeah, they're humongous.
It's a surgery.
Yeah, it reminds me of like Dr. Frankenstein, where things are on top of the building.
Maybe there's still quite a lot of work, like the migrator meters have to come down and then everything that's in their old building has to be.
Yes, but I think triple stuff, that was gonna take like a year or two.
Yeah, it's a lot, it's more, more complex work to do different things with the substation. And so our guys do it. It's a million dollars.
I know. It'll be so good.
I can just let you know that we're starting tomorrow with labor negotiations. Aside from the department, it's mediation, we have four others that are all expiring July 31st. So I think we start tomorrow with electric, CSEA per highway is, is getting on the calendar. Fire is getting on the calendar. Water, I don't know what's going on with Teamsters, but he had called me several weeks ago. I wanted to know if we could have just pushed the date to next year. And I'm going like, yeah, we can fix a little issue with health insurance, if we could.
What's with the health insurance?
It's, the issue is that some of our older plans specify a particular policy and what happens when it changes is it makes it awkward for the village if we have to make a change. And we have, we've had to do that a couple of times.
Well, and basically it's a plan specific, so it lists out a specific plan in the.
Any other ones though?
No, they all do, but some of them have clauses within them, which is a conversation that we have with Brian, to add that clause that states if we can find a comparable insurance plan that is less expensive for the employee and less expensive for the village, instead of taking a 9% hike, we only have to take a 3% hike and there's one modification in the plan, that we have the ability to do that as long as we discuss it with you, with the employees ahead of time. Because as it stands right now, we, we could have saved some money last year and weren't able to because it was a type-specific plan in the contract.
Only one or all?
No, only one of them has a clause in it, CSEA, all the rest of them we couldn't change. So we couldn't make a modification for one, not the rest of them. We stuck it out.
The good news this year is all of it, we haven't, I don't think, I don't think we've gotten rates yet. But I understand it down.
Yeah, we got preliminaries and I think it only went up 5% this year.
It's compared to the early years when it was 14.
Right.
10% is flat.
But I think the coronavirus and everything has everybody, kinda like we tried to keep everything flat here. They're trying to keep it as flat as they can on their end.
Electives. Obviously, you have a lot of health insurance, they're showing a lot of money on their books because.
Dan, anything you'd like to bring up?
Just gonna say that the key word in all that language though is comparable.
Yes.
And you can always find something that's not comparable. But no, I don't have anything, mayor? And I have no news on any litigation or anything else? Thank goodness.
Your thoughts on locals at the beach only?
The beach is a public beach. We cannot, you'd have to change the whole theme and scheme of the beach to make it locals only. It's open to the public. We can't discriminate against one group of people or the other unless you wanna make it a locals-only beach. Or the other thing would be is maybe you start, if you, you could start selling beach tokens or something and only, but only somebody with a beach band or something goes on it. But it's a public facility.
I just wanted, because some places down Westchester County.
Just happened too, from the public beaches on 4th of July.
I think the issue has calmed a little bit. But in talking with Butch, and we have a discussion just about every day because every day there's complaints which are mostly virus-related. But the, the current situation is, under the health department standards, we're, we're admitting 75 people to the sandy surface and another 50 can be in the water. It's a total of 125. What happens is if people come in and our lifeguards have done a magnificent job. It's almost like you call and it's like a restaurant reserving a table. So they say, you know, Randall, party at 5:00, you're ready. That's been going on. But they have handled it very, very well as far as Butch and I can see. And yes, I read the same suggestions that you've read, that we may get locals only. But I think, I think we had a couple of really busy days. I mean, the beach was overwhelmed. Had a complaint today from a lady that doesn't like the white fences. She especially doesn't like the one in the center, which forces people apart. Well, it was put there for that reason, to do exactly what it's doing. So a good thing that came out of that discussion, I guess, was that it corroborates the fact that it worked. But we are, we are doing everything we can to avoid the health department taking any actions that we don't want them to take.
Just spend the money and get cabanas and put a cabana down and you have to rent a cabana for the day.
Six for lunch.
Yep, six bucks. There's your cabana for the day.
That might just be a generative for us.
Yeah.
Locals, locals are looking at you back at the remaining taxes. It's like the old, you have to go pay money to get on the old.
You know, what would, would, could perhaps limit people at the beach or at least limit the amount of time there at the beach? And I know we've discussed it in the past, would be, you know, attrition could be perhaps achieved by parking meters on parkside drive because then people can only go to the beach if they're driving and park for two hours.
It's a good idea.
Can we use Apple Pay?
Yeah.
Date your parking.
I know other beaches, the way they control access is really through parking.
Mindy actually was describing to me a meter payment where the people via their phone, what is it, five times they update?
Oh, yeah, five times. That the mobile pay app has gone through the roof.
It's getting huge on the use.
Oh, you mean that they're extending their meter time?
Yes.
What if they just have a max of two hours rather than how that gets enforced?
And you have a max of two hours, I think I'm gonna be sorry.
No, I wonder if the people, I wonder if the people who are renewing and renewing, are they employees of places on Main Street or people who are living on Main Street? Or are they visitors?
Because the vast majority of them were like an hour, hour and a half. For some reason, when they put the time on, they only put like a half an hour on. So, and I don't, they, they must realize they pay a 35 cent fee every time they add time to it because it tells you on, on your phone. But no, they weren't for extended periods of time. It was hour, hour and a half, maybe.
So they were taking longer than they thought. But anyway, I mean, you could. Parking meters could limit people coming to the beach and staying for a while.
It would also, yeah, probably get rid of some of the cars that are parked there for an eight-hour day.
Yes.
A little bit of discussion, and we can bring this, we can bring it up in work session, but maybe looking at the meter rates at the municipal lot, whether this isn't the time to. I don't know, Peter, you might talk about it a little bit.
Yeah.
On the other hand.
And then instead of $5 for the day. That's right now. But I still, $10 for eight hours?
Well, it's hard to $10 for eight hours and overnight at eight. What happens for somebody that parks overnight?
Number 10.
Yeah, I would do another 10. If you park after a certain hour, it'll be an increased rate. So say you parked after 4 o'clock, you would pay the hourly rate till the end of the eight-hour day and then you have to pay $10 for parked overnight.
Maximum $15 a day or something like that.
Yeah.
Has the, has the main lot been full? I haven't noticed enough. I haven't been.
I was up this weekend and it was, it had a lot of fun.
Parking is very full, but I didn't know what the usage on the main lot.
Unstop cryaks coming out of there.
We'll, we'll know when we get the meter report for revenue from the lot. That'll tell us what we need to know. I'm guessing that we're down some because we don't have the can have all the parking in the lower end of the lot.
I pulled it on the 17th and we were at $23,000 already overall for, for the street, which is about half of where we normally are for the month of July. I think last year we were at $41,000. So we're not that far off and town is still, or the village is still quite busy.
Any other revenue sources?
That's my fingers. And our tax booths have been printed and they're here and Kathy's working on getting them out.
You don't have to rush. Anything else coming forward? If not.
I don't know. Chair of the meeting? Aye.
All in favor? Any opposed? Meeting's adjourned.